Well, I can really see, you know, shoulders up, so maybe he did.
Oh yeah, for the action.
It is good. A black, so you'd be forty seven.
Oh, question. You want to say?
Dave's trying to get this Facebook up.
I know you said we didn't have enough snippers though. The board of business.
It's cause, it's cause I always eat with snippers.
Well, I mean, we are creating and then we're saying, kind of. Oh, yeah, that's right. The zoning appeals.
Right, right, so what happens is if there's a zoning appeal.
The way this reads, it sounds like we were setting up.
There's already one set up, they're just clarifying participation.
Okay.
It's, it's a really good thing.
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah.
It's a really good thing.
Tracy.
Ready.
Hi. There. Ready. Yes. Go, go. Alright, uh, Blake, the call order number four, county meeting, it's May thirteenth, point five six thirty six, let's call it. Uh, let's, uh, please turn off cell phones, refrain from vibrating and announce if you're using another phone device. Public comment is limited to five, use the computer facility and others in business needs. And as always, we are live streaming, if you go off the camera or being recorded while you're here. Um, we can do a little bit of silence and then the project.
The United States of America, and to the Republic, for which stands one nation, under God, and in whose will with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, before we do the roll call, uh, Vivian, the answer backer has requested telecommunications into the meetings, so I'm looking for a motion.
Who was that?
Tracy. We have a second. One second. All there say aye? Aye. Alright, so we get.
Dave, you are in. In the roll call.
Vivian Donsbacher. Here. Joel Poyer.
Here.
Jerry Duncan.
Here.
Seth Feitman.
Here.
Tracy Nuss, here. Vicki Rice.
Here.
Bobby Thomas. Mayor Verl, here. Dr. David Bolton.
Yes.
Sandra Graham. So this is Walt Tilly.
Here.
Engineer.
Uh, the bill now should feel exactly the same tonight. Um, so then we can move on to, uh, public comment on agenda items. Alright, same number, we're gonna move along here to the integral minutes. Tom, were you okay with the wording and all that?
Yeah, I'm reading about it, but, um, just to say a county, it's not a government.
Oh, I have county board, it's probably been, yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And that's what it is, right?
A little decision, thank you. For the county, great. Not us.
Right.
Sorry.
That's okay.
You wanna know, Vivian, we're recusing herself in the vote, she didn't hand.
Uh, oh, the, um, the integral minutes.
The integral minutes, yeah.
Any other revisions, comments, questions, concerns? Motion. So.
Question by Jerry, and seconded by Joe. All there say aye?
Aye.
All votes? Alright, so whoop. Very good. That's, that's alright. I'm wide, uh, informed, so you know ahead of time, so we're, we've got it down already. Now, Mayor.
I attended the April fifteenth, two thousand twenty five, more regional commissioners meeting. Construction on the new police station continues, looks really good. Uh, chief accommodation went to Officer Brett Green during a stop on March fourteenth, two thousand twenty. He located a bag of marijuana in a vehicle operated by a twenty-nine-year-old male. After search warrant, nearly a quarter of a pound of cocaine was found in the car as well. Base unit during, uh, March. Uh, that's Austin, Wearden, and Officer Jack Govan. Had sixteen criminal arrests, one felony, fifteen misdemeanors. They wrote thirty-two traffic citations, running total May through March. It's forty-four felonies, two hundred and eighty-four misdemeanors, and seven hundred and fifty-two traffic citations.
Just from those two?
Just from those.
Wow.
They're in, they covered just a certain area there back in Port Ponce, am I right on that?
Mm-hmm.
I have a full year.
I know. Um, some of the police activity for the borough of the month of March, two thousand twenty-five, that's true, I apologize. Um. Were as follows, the seventh, there is a motor vehicle theft on North Duke Street, that's East St. Avenue, an unknown suspect stole a nineteen ninety-seven Dodge pickup truck. On the fourteenth, firearms violation, the nine hundred block of North Duke Street, and complicated seventeen-year-old fell asleep by holding a handgun and shot himself in the chest. The injuries were not fatal. Fifteenth, there was false identification on North Duke Street at East St. Avenue, a fifty-two-year-old female was arrested for presenting false identification at a traffic stop. For the month of March, two thousand twenty-five, there were a hundred and seventy-two incidents in the borough, which is thirty-eight less than last time, or this time last year. For the year as of March, two thousand twenty-five, the borough has had one hundred and ninety-one reported incidents, which is a hundred and six less than last year at this time. Again, I wish to remind everybody, the speed limit is twenty-five miles an hour on North Duke Street and observed industrial crosswalks. Please slow down when traveling streets of the borough, this time of year that more children than adults are out between.
Okay, here. Okay. Um, as you can see, calls are down, uh, and major crimes, I guess, but, you know, we go, what? They did what? Here's down. So that's good, uh, we're setting up, uh, June, we'll be out, uh, working three out of the four weekends, your first weekend will be sixth and seventh for street broads. So, remember traffic, it's gonna, you know, don't try and go west on thirty from here, go east. Um, and then June fourteenth, if you, you'll see it on Facebook, uh, there's a concert gonna be on Lewis Ferry Road. And that money will be taken when we move to the new station, we have what we call range building, behind our station, big yellow garage. They're gonna take the back half that was always, uh, records, long-term evidence storage, and that money is going to gut that out and we're going to make it a shoot house. Um, where simulation, simulation training, role-playing, uh, active shooter training will occur, and that will be opened up to every police department in York County. So, uh, UDMC shooting, uh, that we're even more familiar with each other at these types of situations. So that'll be June fourteenth, and then, uh, one of the next two weekends, and we'll be doing the, uh, sobriety checkpoint at, uh, Georgian Sixth. So, that, uh, so yeah, it's been subdued the past couple years compared to, uh,
Very quiet.
Compared to ten years ago, you know, so, um, that's it. Okay. Appreciate it, thank you.
And shooter ass, if you rate that idea.
Yeah.
I, I know places that spend big money to do that thing, so, so, just to get training.
Yeah.
That's great. Gee.
Yeah, good evening, everybody, um, it's seven call service for tomorrow, so nothing, uh, nothing major, so things are good. Uh, as far as things in the department, we still have our six guys at the academy yet. Um, we did, uh, yesterday put in service new, um, rescue tools. Uh, we replaced all of our hydraulic tools with battery-operated tools, uh, master spreaders and cutters and rams that we use to, um, educate people from, uh, crash cars. Um, so I'm pretty happy about that, uh, that was a, we were supposed to look at doing that in twenty-seven, I was able to do that this year, so.
Nice.
Um, so I'm pretty happy with that, and, uh, that's about it for the department there, so, coming along.
Quiet, it's in the call.
Quick question, Felicia, um, I noticed some of the addresses are, are similar with the firearms, were, were they real situations, or were they?
Typically, they're activated by some, something, yes. Uh, whether it's smoke from cooking, showers, things of that nature, so. Yeah, if they're, um, if it's a, a false alarm, that like malfunction, uh, we'll probably get with you guys, and it's just missing some contact now. Yeah.
Okay.
So like the two hundred fifth avenue.
Saying, it's one of your.
That's a routine, yeah, uh, and again, that's typically smoke from cooking or, um, showers, things of that nature.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Good day, EMC.
Uh, they're reported this time, I would tell you, I signed paperwork today, um, for Elijah Stoll, uh, sent it. We had just gotten our confirmation for Joy, for, for her appointment, um, so we did send that letter back, let them know that we're still in transition.
Okay, so he's gonna go.
Yes.
Jake, see you. Have a good night.
Thank you, guys, good.
Alright, uh, we move on to, uh, staff, what's in?
Okay, so ratification of our new employee, Elijah Stoll, um, as, as some of you probably already know, Elijah worked for the interior in Adams Town. Was trained in the, their, my position was manager, so he comes in with a lot of information. He is already certified borough official from PSAB. Uh, he has already done two code certifications, uh, to work in code consulting. Um, and then we are, because we set him up with another one, um, through the ICC. And then that'll probably be it, like, he'll be training, like, fully, more than, more than Tom, more than Joy.
Right.
Like, he's, he's on top. Um, I can tell you, since he's been here, he has already, uh, cleaned that office up a thousand percent better. He has organized all the records, he has, uh, collected, uh, some of the inspection fees that were not collected. He has also already started doing inspections on rental properties, um, so he hit the ground running. Uh, he has good support structure because he's familiar with PMA, and, and our code officer, who works with him in Adams Town. So, he has a colleague that he can call at any time, uh, to take care of those situations. Um, with his position, he is also SHRM certified, um, that's. New resources, so it leaves. For HR. Um. Some of those roles, um, which will, um, record retention, uh, training records, uh, organizing training for the employees, um, and also working with Bill on compliance issues, uh, such as our DOT, things like that.
Yeah, Dave, and then, and the new employee, will be doing the new employee.
Yes.
Along with that.
Yep.
When the new employee start, he'll be the one with that.
Yeah, he'll, he'll do the orientation and, and new hiring paperwork, all that stuff. Um.
For, for Joy. For Joy, yeah, so he's gonna, listen, this time is gonna be zoning within the, what, eight hours?
Yeah, so it, basically, we're gonna break it down thirty, ten, just for the paperwork, um, but yeah, it primarily, he'll be doing code zoning, uh, rental inspections, uh, permits, and then, in the other time, basically, the hour before, the hour after, when Tom would have been here, um, you know, when, when the office is closed, that's when he'll look at the HR and the training and coordinating. Because he'll work the same hours, basically, it's, uh, as Bill.
Correct.
So he'll, okay, so he'll go with Tom did and HR would?
Yes.
There a reason?
Because he's HR certified. He knows all the walls, and he knows how records need to be, and how files need to be, and how long we need to pay them, what to do after that. And, and he will get everybody their training, so he'll set up public works training, uh, we're also, uh, we've just finished setting up a training room in the public works building, uh, where the old lounge was, um, so we are, uh, we're gonna get some new tables and chairs, put them in there. LTAP will be holding classes here, in our borough, so, um, we'll get free training out of that. Plus, we'll also host it, so they'll be able to create a network from all the other municipalities that come in and, and get that training as well. That was something we were trying to do when Tom was here, and we'd only had the one class set up. But now we're gonna try to get regular classes for this area.
In the fire hall, with, they, they use it as the lounge in the fire hall, so they're in the back of the hall, near the back rooms? You know, where they had their.
Oh. Besides this, besides this room, it's the biggest building in the borough.
Yeah, when, what, when they have the, when they have the LTAP train, there's what, twenty people?
Yeah, I was thinking twenty-five.
Yeah, they really have, like, twenty people in areas.
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, it, it might be a dozen most times, but yeah, upper, upper numbers.
Well, that's about it. All the classes are up there.
Yeah, absolutely.
No, I'm saying, the twenty, that, that's about the range, I've done that.
Yeah, right. Yeah, and that room could definitely handle twenty people, yeah, chair.
Right, yeah, yeah, that's.
All the junk is gone, so it, the room really opens up, uh. Yes, that, mysteriously, this one. It's, it's still, it's a work in progress, yes, I mean, we still plan to find a solution to that, yeah.
Right, so if that's done, it'll be through door by door, that kind of stuff.
That's the idea, yeah.
So, so, so what I'm asking for here is a ratification, since he has already started, um, we got the approval from the personnel committee, uh, ratification on him for forty hours a week, twenty-four dollars a night.
Dave.
I was just wondering if he has certifications for his zoning position.
Yeah, if you were outside when I went over that, yes, he actually, in the last year and a half, they worked with me, uh, got all of his PSAB certifications, classes, his certified borough official designation, and has two zoning certificates, he's getting a third one, and then he's completely up to speed.
So where does he feel?
Um, well, he was in a military family, so he moved around a lot, but he currently lives over in Adams Town.
He lives in Adams Town.
He, he just got an apartment, um, beginning of the year in Adams Town, prior to that, he lived over in the township there.
Now, I have a question.
Sure, yep, go ahead.
Um, now, he's gonna be called in HR, he's not going to be head of.
No, I'm the head of portion. He's gonna be in charge of the records and coordinating training. Primarily.
He's gotta, gonna have a role where he's gonna be like the learning and development coordinator for the rest of his path.
Right. And that's why he has HR certification.
He's got colleagues in.
And he's going for a masters. Do you agree? Do you have a question?
This seems very personal to you.
Very nice, yes, yeah, I, there are some members from the public who are calling, they're just talking about Matt White, and like, ah, I think he'll be a little a lot fighting going. He's a pretty nice guy.
Over, over in Adams Town, he was primarily, um, he was my, my code consultant.
Right.
So, 'cause over there, we don't have a full-time code officer. We have somebody from PMAC, or PMA, that comes in, does a couple hours, takes care of what we need, prints out the, the, uh, permits, and then he was in charge of helping people fill out their applications, just get their permits, explain the requirements, and then collect the fees. So he's already on top of that. And he's already exceeded his budget by minimums for income, for rental inspections.
Yeah, I wouldn't be able to make that, that meeting, um, with the industry. Uh, was he the only candidate that got empathy?
We had two, and the one didn't come in.
So you're looking at Tom, I should, for, 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 for.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, to rat by his, uh, hiring.
Are there any other benefits in, you want, that, for, on the, apply, or?
Time, time off benefits, every many days, according to the handbook. Johnny, do you remember Joyce?
I think not.
Oh, I wanna say it was real close.
Yes.
It, it was real close, it was, he, he's definitely getting less than top.
Yes.
He has more training.
But he has a lot more training, specifically. Is that a motion?
I think I voted, yeah, I think I voted.
To approve.
You did say he has a degree in?
He has a bachelor's degree, and he's going for his masters. And then his plan is to go and get his Juris Doctor, and he wants. Zoning officer, zoning officer, and he's our specialist in emergency management. So he's doing all three. Yes, he was.
Alright, um, so we've, we've got a, a motion to approve by Vivian, and seconded by Tracy, anybody else? I was just asking if there's any more comments or questions. All there say aye?
Aye.
All votes?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, so, so who?
Thank you. Um, real quick, while we got the floor, um, I don't wanna step on some of these, but, um, I do wanna talk a little bit about money. So, you know, we're getting near mid-year, so that's when I start looking at some things. Sonya and I have been doing it for about once a month, specifying items, making sure they're put in the right place, and, um, that we're tracking everything properly, so, uh, her and I sat down, did a day, uh, went over some numbers, and, um, currently, we are at fifty-seven point six percent revenue, source, which, um, if you look at the number of days in the year, we're at thirty-six percent of the year. So revenues are good, um, expenditures, not including, uh, just general fund, not including capital, is, um, six hundred and thirty thousand, which is forty-six percent. Um, so, uh, we're doing really good, we've got what would be considered a net profit of a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. That's how much we're ahead in revenue versus our expenditures. Um, the other thing that would be done over the time here is, um, we consolidated our staff. So as you know, we used to have ten, eleven employees, um, and now we have seven in the borough. Um, I think we have stronger people than we did before, I think we have more dedicated people than we did before. And monetarily, um, with the restructuring, total wages compared to what I gave you on your budget, so at the beginning of the year, when I said this is our personnel budget, our total wages are projected to be down forty-five thousand eight hundred dollars. So that's how much we should see. Time off benefits are down almost eighteen thousand dollars for the restructure. We have a, um, a director, supervisor, and our CBF, three total. He, he already, he, yeah, he's already on it.
Vivian, that's a direct question to ask him in the interview, and he said yes.
Yep, yep, um, so, so total payroll percentage is down three point two-two percent from our budget, which, which reflects the forty-five thousand. So, that's gonna give us a leaner budget for our personnel, it gives us more room, of course, um, to make sure that we, uh, can fund some other things, like our Windows eleven upgrades that we had to get on our computers, because, of course, that's hiring, uh, in October, they're not gonna add a security upgrade store. So, uh, that's been converted over to the computers, including the council computer and code computer, um, didn't have enough internal memory, uh, for the upgrades, they were the two oldest, and they were out of warranty, so those two units were replaced. Uh, now everything's up, speed up, fair, and, and protect.
And how is the rec building?
The rec building, we are waiting on the state to issue the certificate, everything has been submitted.
The, the occupancy permit, everything is submitted, we're just waiting for the state to put it in an uncommitted.
Wow.
As far as the environmental permits for the park project, uh, when we put the park in, I signed off on the final copies next week. So that should be done, there are a few things we gotta keep an eye on, we've gotta keep the turf at least three inches high, so that the, the turf can grow in underneath, so if somebody comes along and says, hey, they're not knowing the park, no, we're knowing it three inches.
You mean like, if we're gonna remodel it?
Uh, once, once we get that occupancy permit, then we can start looking at those options, yes.
I mean, they might be able to do small stuff, but, I mean, a project like that, yeah, most of it's gonna be done by a person.
Right. Now, our CDVG is gonna be tied up for the next two years, because it storms. But, yes, that's, once we got an occupancy permit and we can use it, then we can look into what type of repairs we wanna do. We're gonna get some of those racks out of there, obviously. Um, we had talked about putting down some tape for pickleball, getting that, you know, putting in some, uh, some, uh, movable backwards in case it's raining outside, you know, if we wanna open it up, but... Just some ideas we're kicking around. That's it. That's all I have.
Beautiful. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, do you have anything?
Um, a couple of things for you. First, um, we had a hearing, um, uh, for President Judge Mustafir Cook, uh, enforcement of the, uh, violations against York City, uh, and, uh, President Judge Mustafir Cook found the city guilty of, um, violating the property maintenance codes, um, for this property here and for the wonderful front alley. So, uh, we've got two convictions there, um, so the appeal period expires in the valley. So, uh, we'll just wait to see if they appeal again. Um, I think the judge is pretty angry.
He was pulled in and just given a sentence and followed.
Who's, uh, oh, he's gonna fall on the sword there.
That's, that's.
We'll see. So, um, what we agreed, like, you can do is like, growing back there again. I don't know if it's soft. So we'd like to go back out to the valley, you know, so you're gonna get the side of it again. That would be nice. To change, uh, yep, not gonna try it. Um, so, so we did that. I wanted to just talk a little bit about the, um, the huge property, um, because, um, I don't know what is going to be in there, but what I'm going to, one of the concerns that I have is the lighting. Um, where I live, um, near the intersection of, um, Mount Rose Avenue and Kings Road, and they have one of those, uh, this medical marijuana facility. And it has to be broken with, but there was no ordinance controlling the lighting, and so all the lighting is against the outside wall shining out into the parking lot. There are ordinances, uh, light pollution ordinances, that require that all be recessed and not visible from off the property, and that all lighting be directed from the exterior to the interior of the property, so that you can't have the lights on the outside of the building. Someone, now that this, um, project seems to be, um, not viable anymore, someone's probably gonna pick up something in that area. But the surrounding area, so much of it is densely populated, residential, that type of thing. So, one of the things you might wanna consider is researching and drafting a light pollution ordinance that governs any new development in the property requires that the light bulb recesses or visible on sight, and that lighting be directed in from the exterior rather than from the interior out, uh, to protect. So that that way, if there's new development, it will be governed by, uh, the new ordinance, and you can protect. So if someone wants to put in another commercial facility, you approve it, or if someone wants to put in, you know, another facility like the one that you posed, you approve it. You will have parking lot stands where the lights shine down on the parking lot, but not spill out into the adjacent property and so forth. So, I did think of that as something you might wanna look into. Uh, I think there are probably modern wheelies that operate from there.
And I think we have some kind of light, uh, system to keep this up.
Um, and then, uh, there's really no other legal issues that are pending that had any activity in the past month. Uh, so I thank you for your improvements. Oh, you may be on vacation with my granddaughter and Aunt Lou last month. That was very nice. We had a very nice night. Uh, so, we'll go over to that again in a program.
Did you have?
No, it was just, he was speaking on the property, his back in the back, and how the grass and stuff's growing up again. There was a York City maintenance firm truck that went down through the beat door. Commenting on Facebook about, so maybe they'll check it out.
Okay, good.
They thought maybe we are the borough and have York City to do it.
Yeah, no chance.
Yeah, York City is not doing urgent.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I don't think we have anything for any of you, right?
No, they're still working on the, uh, storm surge situations.
You should all have papers, um, payroll for the month of April, total twenty-six thousand four hundred eight dollars and seventy-eight cents. Expenses in the general fund, total two hundred eighty-two thousand four hundred ninety-two dollars and sixteen cents. As you can see, the majority of that money was time off mortgage. Sewer expenses, total eleven thousand ninety-seven dollars and sixty-six cents. Majority of that money was spent on engineering. And liquid gold, we spent four thousand two hundred ninety-six dollars and fifteen cents. So anybody have any questions? What was the expense for Tom Farmil? Uh, he had to come into the year.
We, we paid him for his appearance.
Okay, he had to come in for the year. Just checking.
And he did very well, of course.
Yeah.
He did. Thank you, Tom.
Anything else? And then I'd like to have approval for those and, uh, payment authorization pages, I mean, uh, for today.
Any questions for someone? Motion to accept. We have something from Dawn, very good. Alright, all bakers say aye?
Aye.
Alright. All votes? It's a loop.
And I have to have our correspondence. Good, alright, thank you. Uh, community organizations, um, yeah, I think we covered personnel for Whitewood, um, is that, um, Tracy, you wanna do, um?
Yeah, um, on Saturday, May twenty-fourth, we're gonna have a kickoff this summer, four to seven down at the park. We are going to have food, um, games for the kids, uh, music by Good Stu, and just hope people come out and enjoy the, the park and recreation. And some fellowship will, for people grow up, so.
You said it'd be coming again?
It's May twenty-fourth, from four to seven, um, we will have food, um, snacks, Rindas, chips, um, lots of, um, some prizes for the kids for games, um, things like that, so.
Do, do we have a student stew?
Yeah, it's G O O B S T E W.
I'll get that, I'll get that out on Saturday.
That's two words, so just one I'll get.
Two.
Two. Uh, he can have it on Saturday, chef food on Saturday.
Well, they do put it on already?
Yeah, yeah, me.
Okay, perfect.
I'm pretty sure it's now.
Yeah, we saw, I think we saw it.
That's music, not additional food.
Don't say you didn't stew.
Alright, thank you, Tracy. Um, do you have anything for me?
Well, what I'm trying to plan, I'm, I wanna work on a unity day in the borough. And just to unite, to unite everyone. So I'm gonna be working on that. Um, and I'm still looking for anyone, uh, in the borough that is willing to come on board. And I'd also like to give a shout out to the two new restaurants coming to the borough, Pepper Pots. Um, it's a Jamaican restaurant at the former Caribbean Choice, and Taste of India at the, at the Desperados, the, of, one of the stands beneath the bottom of the hill. So that's gonna bring a lot into the borough. And I just wanna welcome. To fly.
You, right, thank you. Vicki, would you like me to book, uh, Savvy out for your, for your committees? Okay.
Anybody else have anything about communities organization? Uh, I don't, we have middle business, I don't know if we have any new business, so we can open before to public comment. What's your problem? Anything on your chest, anything else?
I have a question about the, uh, maintenance building.
Yes.
Given the articles in the paper, it looks like Wall Street and Incher, kaput.
Getting divorced, yeah.
Uh, so all the plans that we've heard up to this point was, they were pretty well gonna buy the maintenance building, and with that money, we were gonna build the new maintenance building, and so where are those plans and, and what's, what's Plan B?
So, so if we're gonna discuss that, we should probably go into the executive session, uh, to discuss real estate. And I'm happy to do that.
I don't even know that there.
It, it's probably, it's probably nothing I should announce publicly.
Okay.
Because we do have the building currently advertised for sale.
Right, yeah.
So we'll have to wait till next month to see if we can get any bids on that. And then there are options if it gets bid on or if it doesn't get bid on, so, or if you don't accept the bid. So yes, there will be some discussion, and I, I will want an executive session prior to that meeting. Just to go over that.
So maybe in the June meeting, I'll, I'll bring it up again when we have executive session.
Yeah, yeah, I, well, that's what I'm saying. We should have an executive before the next meeting, so that I can discuss, okay, you know, here's what's gonna happen if this happens, if this happens. This way you guys know. But, but we won't know until we get into the meeting and open the bids.
Right, I understand that. Okay, I'm gonna wait.
Um, anybody look at the tapes from the park and the trees?
Rock started reviewing those today, yes. Yes, I called her up this morning, asked her to look at that, um, it was Saturday, right? Cause I told her Saturday.
Yeah, I mean, that's when I saw it. Well, I posted Saturday, it was Friday. I'm pretty sure it was Monday or Saturday. It had to be Friday or Saturday, but, I mean, that's the first I've been down out there for a while. It was Saturday when I, um...
So yeah, the answer is yes. We are reviewing the tapes from that weekend. To see if we can see anything. Most of the cameras aren't in those areas, but we can still see if somebody's coming back and forth, or if somebody goes down and then we see a tree come up.
Alright, is that for this weekend?
Yeah, it is.
Yes. So, just for the public, um, the borough staff got thirty trees. We were planting them in the hills, in the park, and a week after they planted them, somebody came through and physically ripped them out.
Not all of them.
Not all of them, but enough of them. So, please stop ripping our trees out for trying to make the park nice. Thank you.
I do actually have a question. Um, the damage that was done to the basketball courts in, uh, down at the park, is that scheduled to be repaired, or isn't it, wasn't it bad enough that it has to be repaired?
So with the actual damage to one of the basketball court, is it minimal? Yes, it's minimal. I still wanted it fixed. I was informed by officials at the county who are prosecuting that, that more than likely with the estimate that we got to repair it, that the judge is not going to impose that on mine. I have still submitted it, but it's up to the judge whether or not. They ordered restitution, and our insurance will not cover. Now, we did get, we did get some money from the insurance company for like signs that were knocked down, garbage cans, things like that. But the actual surface, they said is not, is not insured. But the trails, the walkways, anything paving, they consider that paving, and they're, they don't insure it.
Okay, just curious.
Yes, but I, I don't know what the final disposition is, but county's telling me they're probably not gonna get that. So what we will end up doing is, once everything's done and we start looking to put that fence into the basketball court, um, we'll see what options are there to at least put some kind of seal or on those areas, uh, so that, you know.
So that it's.
So it's not, yeah, it, it, because the ice is gonna get in, stand, or, yes, it's gonna degrade, so we will look at some options. But I'll wait till the excavators are here to, to open the fence. Cause we've got the one fence that we, we did get paid for at, at the playground, and then council had approved the fence for the basketball court on one side.
Yeah, which would prevent the ball.
Says we're gonna close.
Just a fair.
Yes. And then there still is work that needs to be done to warm that basketball court on the left side where the bench is, because that's falling in. That is contracted date. Cause that is part of the workmanship. So there is a plan to cut that box out, do some backfill, and create a pad that will not sink in, and to be crackway. But we had to close out our environmental protection. We weren't allowed to do any changes and stuff, so. But that got signed off last week, so. So, yes, now the contractors can come out next month, hopefully. I haven't confirmed that with them yet, but yes, that is the plan.
Anyone else? See, nothing?
Um, good. Yeah, I missed this early, Vortec.
Vortec was the, um, the final payment for the sweep room. Yeah, so what happened there, they had sent an invoice, and they had crossed their invoices and their payments, and back and forth, Sonya and I looked into the records, um, and yes, there was an outstanding balance. Cause they had applied one of our payments to a different invoice, then there was credit on that invoice, so then they put the credit on the other invoice.
And they got.
So yes, that is the final payment.
And they got a new staff member, so that staff member was moving there, we can do a new staff member. We gotta get it, yeah. We gotta get it, yeah.
Well, we've been running it, it's been running good.
I'm just seeing it.
Yep, yep. Yeah, Boston doing a great job getting out there with it.
So when are you gonna start the actual sweeping, where we're gonna be adding cars?
Well, I'll be able to bill, bill pretty good. I can tell you now that, um, in Chissin's first month, that Bill was here, he created four pages of long notes of things that either were non-compliance, needed to be updated, or we just never addressed. So he has actually taken it and created a professional, the partner, um, definitely that we have seen. So yes, um, on that list, he's gotten about three quarters of it done already, since he's been.
And that's been the next.
Yeah.
Oh, I, I just wanna say, um, there's a situation about, you know, some things, uh, talking now. I wanna talk to you now with, uh, um, I guess, um, Dallas again. Turns out this company's working on.
That's not ready for public dissemination. That just happened today.
Beautiful. Um, next cap, next regular time's a meeting, is June ten? Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, yeah, so, uh, someone contacted me and said, uh, there was, there's been an issue with my road, I guess it is. Up here.
Yeah, yeah. Behind the cell towers.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, road went between six and seven.
Yeah, around there, there's like a, a beep or something blocking, uh, maybe in there.
No, so that is a borough right of way. That is not a public street. We had a lot of complaints about activities that should not be occurring back there. We had a lot of complaints about activity that should not be occurring back there. And so, Public Works Department put a chain up.
I'd like to see a copy of the complaint.
They were funding complaints. So, so it's our property and we can, we can chain it off?
Well, I do, I, I personally myself and hundreds of people dealing with right-of-way issues, I don't think it's a... I'm just saying. You can do, you can do what you want, you can maybe this side's not law, maybe this side's law.
Tell me again where it was.
So, so right next to the one house there, there's like what looks like, um, a driveway on the sidewalk. And then on law. And then it goes back behind the other houses. So, the other houses, and then this alley, and then the houses along the side street.
Right down the street, sure.
Okay?
Okay.
So, so that alley is bricks.
It's a paper street.
It's a paper street. It goes back a certain, goes back a certain ways, and then it stops because the other property comes across it. So, what was happening...
You know, right away there, those people could use for all the, for trees, for... That is never been a issue in all those...
So, what has happened?
People that aren't fighting, not the main workers, they don't do. But anyway, I, I honestly, I don't think that's why, I really don't, I think the people have access.
Okay, you didn't listen to my explanation, Vivian.
What I'm finding, some of these parts here, that's not... I suppose that people that might have been involved with it.
No, so...
It's supposed to be my alley, it's supposed to be my, whatever it is. What it is, it's, it's, it's...
Okay.
They're trying to block out that, uh, and more than that, that's for fire drills and everything else too, if need be. And that's what's after change, someone else's property?
It's not someone else's property, it's borough property.
That's, that's, oh, no, he put it, I thought, I got it. It's attached to his property. Yes, it is, go take a look.
I'm within my rights to block off the paper alley because... Can I speak? I didn't get finished.
And in the middle of the grassy, uh, the, 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 uh, grass bank, the middle. Where the one family lived, where Morgan and Daniel lived, he sold their house to these people from there. And that bit, the bit, another thing, the change from their property, from yellow to blue, down the hall. I bet anybody sitting on their floor, we have to come.
Can I finish on this stuff?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, the problem was that there were vehicles that were pulling up in there. It was creating mud and other situations along the side yard. Other people were parking in there, and then other people were parking behind them. And then they couldn't get out. So, they were going around those people, which goes into somebody else's yard, because there is an fence between that and the yard. So, what we did was we restricted the access into the yard. It's not paved, there is no stone. And the edge of the properties that may be accessing it are fenced off along that road.
They have names on the back fence.
I didn't say they didn't.
Or that lives down all the time. Matter of fact, I just saw him, he went through top airbus, no, wow.
So do I, Vivian.
So, what with that, our rights? It's a, I just wanna make sure that we are within our rights on what we, what we've done. I'm pretty sure if it wasn't within our rights, we wouldn't have done it, so. It's not a thorough street, right?
It's not a thorough street, because if you drive up into it, you're gonna run into the back of the other property on the opposite street. And there's a giant tree there. And, and there's no room to take...
Hold on, hold on, Vivian's trying to explain the council here. You still have to be respectful.
So, so when you drive up into there, okay, it goes up past a couple of the properties, the backs of the properties, okay? And then it ends at a giant tree, and it becomes narrower, so you can't even get a vehicle through there. Because it's only a couple feet to go out. And then when you go to the front of that other house, there's literally only a couple feet. So, there's no way to put a full alley in there. So, it was already cut off at that property line. This property was being intruded upon. So, we were stripped of access. It's not a street.
Recert, you can find a way, recert, now you can stop people who use, uh, they've used it for you. You cannot build this one, you're gonna change it off somebody else's property like that.
It's our property. It is our property. It is our paper alley, it is our street. It is unimproved, and we have the right to restrict access. Because there's no thoroughfare, there's no way to get out of it, except for to come back the other way. And if another car parks behind it... Well, like you said, Vivian, new people moved in.
Okay, I knew they were moving in, in terms of three people, remember, they said they were getting smart now from a kind of person that's in their hand. They, it's just my problem, they all, he does not know that grassy right of way. See, that's how people get it.
What we do.
Okay.
Question.
Oh, God, I don't even know anybody.
Come on, I've given the floor to Sandy, let's let Sandy talk.
Okay, um, that has been an open thoroughfare for years. Um, that was always accessible, and yes, it is a grass alley, but it was always accessible to those who live on Duke Street. Because their backyards are adjacent, they have left that side. And at one point, when I first moved in here, that tree was not quite as big as it is. It has grown immensely, okay? And you could get a vehicle down through there at that point. But now, because it's grown so big, you cannot...
Well, even with the side of the house, the way the house sits on that lot, you could not drive the whole way through to the other side.
Well, I did with my Jeep.
Okay, it's not thoroughfare. Because you could not go the whole way through.
Does this thing run east, west, or north, south?
North, south.
North, south.
Yes.
Was the chain put across?
The very, at the very front of the property, after the sidewalk. So, you can still walk on the sidewalk, you just can't drive in and up through. And the borough has done that before. With bollards.
Kind of pin, you can drive up to the end of that property. Whatever the property you moved inside of.
The one that's on law, yes. Yes, it, it only extends back to the end of that property on law. Because then the, the, the houses on the other side, on Sixth, but against that. Yes.
So, this one's parallel to the alley behind your house?
When we purchased our property, we had a grass alley that went from Mead Street all the way down to Laurel Street. And it was maintained by the residents who lived in the properties adjacent to it. We quieted our area, as did everybody in the nine hundred block. Okay? Then, that was never quieted, nobody, I mean, it, they could have done that, but they chose not to. It was always accessible to people who lived in the ten hundred block on the east side of Duke.
So, but the alley behind your house, who initially had that paid?
Oh, no, no.
No, that's Howard.
I'm talking Jerry.
The one, I'm, I'm trying to, so...
There was two alleyways. Okay, here's the main alleyway that's McCann. Then here was a grass alley that went from Mead Street all the way down through.
But it ran parallel to your house?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, they chained that, I just need another username to give them one heck of a point.
Well, how did the borough end it up open, if you've got...
It's, it's a paper alley.
What's that mean?
It means that we have right-of-way access in between the property.
Is that like the road that's right back here?
No.
It's a, it's a street back here that's never been, but it's all, it's on paper.
On paper, yes. Right.
So, it's a similar situation?
Similar. It's, it's never been the other.
Right. And now it's become an issue wide?
Because we chained it off because too many people were parking back through there. Uh, it was getting rugged up, and then the people who were parking first, and other people would park in, because you get several vehicles there.
Right.
Well, if they wanna move, they've gotta go into this person's yard, go around to those cars, and then come out. Even if that person put a fence up, only one car would give it access to it, otherwise, it's gonna create a blockade, because you can't go out the other way.
How many houses abut up against that?
I don't know, like, three or four, maybe?
I don't know, it's, it's all the way from the bottom, from Laurel Street all the way up to the end.
Well, and there's, there's a property up the end, so it's only about that.
So, do the homeowners that live adjacent to it, do they mow it?
I would imagine.
So, they've been treating it like their yard, or a part of their yard?
Right.
But it's not?
No, because we need to have access for utilities.
And the borough has not maintained that grass alley at all.
So, so, so the agreement usually, in these situations, and happens a lot, is those situations, the, the locals take care of it, and use it as a yard.
Yeah.
But if we need access, they have to make it.
Yeah.
In this situation, too many people were getting in there. So, if we need to get in there, how are we getting those people out?
I'm just looking at it, so I think we've, we've looked at that paper, yeah. Because regardless, it's still gonna be the same issues.
And then you're gonna find out, those people are gonna say, "Really going to do, I'm not knowing that," and then it's our, it's our...
Well, that was the problem, they didn't want to know it anymore, because it was getting rugged up. And it's getting money from all the vehicles.
Can't we put a sign there, no vehicles?
That's why they put the chain up.
Well, yeah, I'm gonna...
The, the problem isn't the chain, the problem is they want to park it. But if we're not going to allow parking back there, it doesn't matter if we put a sign or a chain. If, if, if council wants to fix it the right way, behave it. Well, how about...
Give me directions, tell me which one.
How about we do this? Well, I mean, do you wanna, do you wanna spend some solicitor money to, uh, investigate what the case law is on a paper street? Public issue? You're saying that word, but, but do, do they have a right-of-way on their deeds? I mean, you know, do they have a legal right-of-way? Do they put that in writing for you? I mean, I'm not gonna take so-and-so said, so, so-and-so.
It's hearsay.
I'm not saying I don't believe you, I'm saying we can't operate on so-and-so said something, so that we should do.
Well, it's somewhere, somewhere it's recorded on cloud that indicates where the property lines are, and if it is a right-of-way, who has the right-of-way? If the borough wants to grant an easement for the people to live there, that's fine. But it's still under borough control unless you wanna give it. Have the people assume ownership of it, because they've been mowing for forty years or whatever it is.
So, so if we need to, if, if we needed this paper alley to access utilities, we can't, we can't have them assume. That would be a quiet title situation if she was telling.
Right.
And, and if we didn't need that, I, I wouldn't care, I'd say, let, let them have access, but...
That's what they did with, okay, there's a little off of Duke Street in the eleven hundred block. There is, if you're facing the old bank, from where Boots Trappers. There's an alleyway beside the Harrods.
Four yellow poles coming up to keep...
Well, and that...
They're talking the side.
I'm talking the side out.
Between Eighth and where Charlie Harrods, he runs off of, uh, right. Okay, the council center on Eighth Avenue.
Through there, same thing there.
Grass road that goes up through.
Between one fourteen and...
Between there and eleven, what is that, eleven thirty-six?
Okay.
Okay, so that would be similar situation. And there's, there's, there's... Eighth Avenue is between Eighth Avenue and eleven thirty-six or two. On the west side of Duke Street.
And they...
It was too many.
They did red light. And they wanna walk back, like, walk next to that fence, and then it's... You know, that, that fence has been, you know, a couple times, there, there... It has been facing us.
Well, look, it's, this isn't on the agenda, but obviously, it's pretty clear to me, we're not gonna resolve an issue tonight. Um, so, we can argue about it for another hour or...
The problem is, when somebody says something, Vivian, it's considered hearsay unless it is in writing, or they confront the council themselves. So, it's hearsay. You can have pictures, but that's not hearsaying the person, and it, how are you going to go and have the person? It's hearsay because of the person that talked to you.
Well, who wants to speak on this? Vivian, she's not. Vivian, who wants to speak on this?
Has anybody, has anybody complained?
About the... This resident that Vivian's talking about?
Okay, is that the resident one fourteen?
Was that sixteen? Is it the resident one fourteen or one sixteen that's complaining?
Nine, you're saying nine fourteen or nine sixteen?
One, one fourteen or one sixteen.
Oh, oh, no.
Because it goes in between those two. So, that's if she doesn't know?
She doesn't know, okay.
So, if she doesn't know...
Well, I mean, it seems easy to remedy if it was, if it did happen to be attached to their fence. Just go drive in a pole and attach to the pole.
So, what I would say is, first of all, find out what that resident, if the resident is complaining. And if so, what the complaint is, just have that resident contact, uh, immediately. And just find out what's going on. And then let's deal with it from there. Paper street's your tricky thing, I don't wanna comment on it in the public opinion. So, but I can tell you that if we just talk to the resident, that's... So, but I can tell you that if we just talk to the resident, let's try to solve the problem rather than.
Yeah, because, because that should have involved me anyway.
Right.
I'm not, 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 not. How long ago was that? And, and the, and the chain wasn't even opened, Thomas.
Yeah, but the chain wasn't there at that time, Vivian.
That was recent. That was recent. Tell her to email me at manager@northwork.us and give me her complaint. You're not listening to me. Okay, I just gave you a solution.
Just, just have them contact Dave. He needs to hear it directly from them.
Manager@northwork.us. Well, Vivian, you're not the judge.
Well, look, we, we just, Vivian, come on, come on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Vivian, what I'm trying to say is, just. It's a, it's a thorough, it's a, it's an actual paved alley, what are you talking about? Look, we just literally agreed on what we were gonna do. We're gonna get this resident to contact the Dave and hear exactly what their issue is. And then we're going to reconvene and decide what we want to do. You said you want this to be done and checked right, we've just agreed that that's what our angles gonna be. And that's gonna be our goal. All right, great, well, we're putting this matter to rest right now, okay? Um, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So soon.
Uh, I'm just gonna write two names down, how about that? Uh, it is, uh, it's seven, seven forty-six.
Here, Vivian, is that your voice?
Uh, I'll take that idea.
Okay.
Good. Trying to do that idea. It's curious how that happened, Vivian, it's amazing. Well, it's a, um, issue like if you've ever had some. Where's this at?
Okay.
Person parks and they're trading that person. I mean, look, it's a street.
Yard, Duke Street corner, Laurel Park.
It was like, I kinda assumed it was like that. Frankly, this is neighbors, like, get your phone. Yeah, person, get his shit. It's, it's really not a big of an issue, why not? Yeah, but, I was like, not our job to settle disagreements between neighbors. Cause it's illegal though.
Except it's a right of way. I can, I can tell you something, I'm talking to people, sit over there, I can talk to you about. If David is here, if David is here, it'd be helpful.
Dave? I wanna hear the.